...in there every day. I mean, some of us eat Mexican three times a week.
Right.
So therefore can't take, really take profit for the eighty-two thousand because it's honestly coming from other places too. More or less probably the Blue Ridge train and the locals because...
We're not planning, no, we're talking about the eighty-two thousand dollars strictly what each person spends based on our exit surveys, what they spent in Copper Hill while they were there.
Who did that to exit service?
Not the profits. Tennessee Valley Railroad Museum.
Y'all do, y'all gonna leave.
No, we go to Tennessee Valley Railroad Museum.
Where they at?
They're at Chattanooga. They run, they run the trains. So...
You buy a ticket and you buy Chattanooga?
Well, it doesn't take a lot of...
For a train in Braggans?
It doesn't take a lot of knowledge to know that if I drop thirty, uh, if I drop two hundred people in Copper Hill, they're not gonna stand there on the block. They're gonna spend some money. They're gonna go eat. And that's, that's just, yeah, they're gonna eat. And some of them are gonna spend some money, some are gonna spend a lot of money, and some are gonna spend very little. But they're all more than likely gonna eat. If you go up there on a train day, they're eating.
The thing about it is too though that, I mean, I, I get your drift, don't have a problem with that. But if it wasn't Copper Hill being there for people to get off to go spend an hour or two, whatever the time lapse is there, it'd make it a whole lot more difficult for this little railroad people to get that hundred and thirty-two dollars a ticket if they had to run up there and warp everybody around in a circle and bring them back home. Because the train ride's gonna be a whole lot shorter and it's not gonna sound near as appetizing.
Well, actually, tickets aren't a hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Well, I, I must say that's a bit short.
I wish we could, I wish we knew that. Now, there might be a special trip that I don't know about, but our trips are not that expensive. But at the same time, if Copper Hill wasn't there, you're right. But the thing is, we sell probably, we could sell just as many who went up to Arner and back. Actually, we would make more money. But our agreement was that with Pope County that this was gonna be for economic impact. If we go up there and turn around, you all don't make any money. So our agreement with Glen Springs Holdings was we were gonna turn this into economic impact for Pope County. That's why we dropped them off the shop. We can turn it around there, Arner, and it actually make more money for McMinn County. Because McMinn County gets very little, uh, out of this business because...
No dial.
We, we drop, we drop off to eat there. Our shops are not open when they, when we let them in. And when they get back, our shops are closed. So really...
Where does people park the board of trains?
They park at the depot.
In Edwah?
Yes.
Where all the shops are, up and down both sides of the...
They're closed.
They're closed.
They're closed, yes. So they, at, at five in the morning, the nine fifteen, our shops are closed. So they don't get any benefits.
Gas stations closed?
Gas stations, if they wanna get gas on the way out. You're absolutely right.
I mean, we're, uh, you know, our sales tax going to happen again. People, building, walking around in Edwah, stopping at the gas stations, you know. I just, I mean, at what point is the people, like you was talking about those people that eat in Copper Hill, they also trip, follow, meet our amateurs, our deputies, our police force, uh, their garbage goes in our dumpsters. At what point is this bigger group alive building instead of an asset?
Well...
Because we're short on deputies, we're short, I mean...
Apparently you've done business like that, haven't you?
I have been for twenty-two years.
Well, then you need to go back and look at economic impact and see what kinda impact that is. And there's a cost of doing business. But when you consider you get down to the end of all this, and you look at, we're also paying, uh, fifteen thousand sixty, six hundred and sixty-two dollars for property tax, which I hope is going to pay for some of those things.
Is that just, does that just pan on the railroad part? Is that how that works?
That's for the property taxes, what we, we own the railroad line. We actually...
Do you guys own that?
We, we pay a mortgage on it, yes. Yes.
We all pay the same per square foot of property as everybody else in this county. You know what you're paying when you buy. Uh, the average property owner would pay the same as you do. Their ownership of that property is not requiring its use of our infrastructure. You're as bad as, I mean, because of your property.
Your, your citizens will use a lot more infrastructure than our trains will. Our trains were owned there.
When I say infrastructure, I mean our, uh, EMT, amateur service, our deputies, uh, garbage. I mean, what your fourteen thousand, if you took a random group of people to mind their property taxes, that it would come up to fourteen thousand, and you compared that group's needs of our infrastructure compared to what your group's needs are, we're getting way more money worth out of citizens by the fourteen thousand.
I, I don't know where this math comes from. I, I really don't.
I don't know where you're coming from.
I can put my...
As long as I want you to say, if we can get another railroad and two waterfalls in here, we can be out of debt and build five new coos.
Well, I, I can tell you this. I can tell you this, if the trains do turn around, and with Mount of Arner, you're still gonna be having the same expenses, but you're not gonna have two hundred and seventy-seven, two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of economic impact and a positive thing. If you give us five thousand dollars and we're giving you two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, that's a fifty-five, fifty-five times the return on investment, on money you give us. Five thousand dollars is all you can give us. And let me say, five thousand dollars does nothing to, to the over hill. We're not gonna go out of business based on that. We just don't wanna lose the partnership because it's an economic boon for you all. Even though you don't recognize it, you don't see that, it is an economic benefit. I guarantee you, if tomorrow we said, well, we're not gonna go to Copper Hill, we're not gonna drop them in, I guarantee those businesses up there are gonna be upset because we're dropping the peasants to death.
How many times, how many times does that train come to Copper Hill?
I, I didn't bring the list, but it's the majority, almost all of them. I would say...
I mean, in the year's time, how many times do you think it goes to Copper Hill? Or a month, what, a month, a month?
At least, at least, at least eight trips a year.
Because at Christmas time, the Blue Ridge train goes last. It comes in the morning, then it comes at night, the Christmas lights. So that's, they're making double. And, I mean...
But they turn around and go back, they don't always drop people off.
Oh, yeah.
Some of, some of the trips are just up and back. I know I work with them.
I've worked with them, yeah.
Yeah, but not, not all of them do. And they, they, they drop off, and when they drop off, they also drop off at our site because we've had the agreement with them to drop off on our property.
They drop off every time though, because I was working in town and I was there every day.
Yeah.
So, um, also, do we make anything off of the ticket sales? Because you guys bought in G Creek, which is in Delano, right?
No, Edwah.
El...
No, we, we actually, we, we actually, we live in the, and take them by bus, Pope County buses, we take them to G Creek and go.
So they hold the bus in Edwah.
Right.
But you're getting on in Delano.
But then they gotta get on in Pope County.
Right.
The line, CSX ends and theirs starts. CSX won't let them on their property. So you gotta have Pope County to get on the train.
Actually, actually, we own in McMinn County, we could build a loading site, but it was a partnership that we have with the G Creek State because it was a good deal for them to get people to discover G Creek Campgrounds.
So are we get, do we get anything off ticket sales?
That's how we go get. We don't get nothing off of G Creek, G Creek Campgrounds.
We don't get anything off ticket sales other than, uh, Tennessee Overhill does get some to pay the two million dollar loan we have.
Well, she's asking, does the county get any money from ticket sales?
Ticket, Pope County does not, you just get, you get the economic benefits of dropping them. McMinn County does not get it either. No county does. No, but I'm just saying...
They get plenty more. And two, uh, you know, let's talk about the rail line where it has changed name. Why is, uh, when you pull on Edwah, it says, welcome to Edwah, home of the High Wausau Seating Railway Station?
Because we want to bring more people to use. We want them when they drive into town. We want them to see the sign that says, "We have a train and we're gonna take you to Copper Hill."
That's not what it says.
Well, but that's what happens.
But that's not what it says.
Well, I'm sorry, but you can't figure that out. That's, you know, that's, that's what it's about.
I did figure it out. That's why you're sitting here begging for your money back.
No, this is, five thousand dollars I pulled it out of my pocket. I mean, I've been in business for some years. I pulled five thousand dollars out of my pockets immediately. But to the Tennessee Overhill, it means very little. It's the partnership that's, that's gonna be a cause. Because at that point, we had to say, we only, we're only there to serve our partners. And if Pope County doesn't wanna be our partner, then, then we just have to...
The partnership is more important than the money?
Yes, but that's part of your obligation that you all made thirty years ago, was we're gonna support this as being a partner to the Tennessee Overhill. We're gonna give, McMinn County's given three times what you've offered.
And they're getting probably six times the common benefit.
No, no, that's absolutely wrong. Absolutely wrong. You get, you get a lot more. You can, if you can show me how McMinn County can earn more, uh, I'll pay you lunch. But no, they don't. Because we're dropping people in, dropping them in where they have no place else to go. When they get back, our shops are closed. I know, I worked there a bit, worked downtown.
Well, part of that relates everybody, I think, in general, or some of us anyway. You know, I don't think anybody's trying to be ugly about this. We're just so set up with everybody getting the claim what we've got.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
And it's like, we get nothing back.
I, I think, I think this, this group back here will tell you, I fight for you all. I wish Adrian and Labor was here because I was kinda furious because Bradley County tries to claim what you all have, Chattanooga tries to claim it, and they will tell you at the meetings, "I fight that, fight about that because I think it's wrong." I don't work for McMinn County. I work for Pope Monroe M. N. I don't get paid. I'm a volunteer. But I've worked every day for you all. I'm with Chamber of Commerce, but I'm working, I sell more Pope County. These guys that have businesses here in Pope County to you, I sell Pope County probably more than I do McMinn County because you all have more assets. Harold, did you wanna say something?
I would like to. I'm a native Pope Countyan. I promote Pope County my entire life. I went to the University of Tennessee and got a degree, and I brought all my friends home with me at every opportunity. Some of them have bought property in Pope County and live in Pope County. I'm the only founding board member of Tennessee Overhill still going to meetings. The first few years, we had workshops in Nashville sponsored by the National Trust. I went on my dime. Nobody paid me for going to all these meetings. Nobody paid for my hotel room. Nobody paid me a per diem to go to Nashville, to different places where we had workshops, training us, promoting tourism. And what I did for a straight visit, am I hearing the commissioner saying, "We don't want tourism in Pope County"? Because that's all we've done for the past thirty years is promote heritage tourism. So I'm not sure what it is, what the complaint is, but there's something here that I don't understand. And that's why we're making this issue at this point in time. If I do issue things you're going to board, the buses in Benton, the whole basis of our group was heritage tourism. The Old Line Railroad was the main line from Knoxville to Atlanta for about twenty years. That's the historic part of it. Benton was not a part of the Old Line Railroad. Reliance has ties to Edwah. My dad and uncle graduated from Edwah High School. Both my sisters and I graduated from Pope County High School. We went all twelve years to Pope County High School. But the ties, the connections to Pope County and to Reliance and to Copper Hill were made through the railroads. We're promoting heritage tourism. We're not just Tourism Association in general. But, but having the three counties in the, together, we can promote us as a destination. My rafting company doesn't have the money. I can't go advertise in Atlanta, out of state kinda stuff. Tennessee Overhill can. We have been bringing in literally hundreds of thousands of dollars over the last thirty years in grant money, from everything from the Southeast Development District to the Lynn Hurst Foundation in Chattanooga. There's no Chamber of Commerce that has access to that kinda funding. And to hear the discussion that I'm hearing tonight is like, I've just wasted the last thirty years. I should've been staying home, tending to my business. I, I really don't understand the discussion that's going on.
Well, I don't see nothing as wasted. I believe that's a best of missing view for what it is. These nine people at this table are saying, "We're the only voice for this county," and I don't think we should be demonized or asking something simple, say, "Why don't you sell them tickets here and take the sales tax that was taken place?" We're not trying to shut you down. We're trying to make it so they have a playing field for the county. This is our issues. This is what my constituents tell me. I represent them. It's my job to balance this county's budget. And I'm gonna ask for every dime we can get, when we can get. Is that too much to ask?
I respect that and I understand that we don't get any money off the ticket sales either.
But, but okay, let's go back.
We don't get sales tax on that, that also.
Well, I'm not gonna get sales tax.
I don't get sales tax.
Uh, I don't know how that works. I'll be honest with you.
Okay, you didn't sign that out.
But, but that's going to Tennessee Dollar Rail. But I wonder, just what you said, and you're exactly right. And that is one of the things that I feel you are championing. And I'm not from Pope County, okay? I'm not with the Pope County Chamber of Commerce. Adrian does a real good job. But I sell Pope County and I protect Pope County a lot more than a lot of people in Pope County did. Because it really bothers me when I see Bradley County and Chattanooga coming here and trying to take this. And we, as the Overhill, have been doing exactly that, saying, "You need to let us know when they're coming in and doing these things." Because we've got to protect what is ours. And when I say ours, I'm not from McMinn County when I'm talking about that. I'm from Pope Monroe M. N. And that's my job as chairman is to protect you. And that's why I'm here right now, because I'm trying to protect you from you. Because you're about to, you're about to say, "We don't wanna spend five thousand dollars." And, and when we don't spend five thousand dollars, we're not interested in that economic impact of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. We're not interested in it. I think it's a very reasonable thing. I've said my piece, and I'm not gonna argue it.
Let me ask you this real quick. It's, it's a question.
Yes.
Uh, what is the difference, and I'm, and this is probably a stupid question, but I'm not easy to imagine, so I don't care. So, we've got a Pope County Chamber of Commerce.
Yes.
Okay. What are they doing, or what are they not doing that you get?
The Tennessee Overhill.
Right.
There is a lot that they can't do. I'm, I also work for Chamber of Commerce, okay? I work for Edwah Chamber of Commerce. And I can tell you, I can't do what the Overhill is doing. There's no way. I couldn't even produce this one brochure. You all could not produce, when you wanna spend twenty-five thousand dollars, when Adrian's gonna come to you and say, "I need twenty-five thousand dollars to produce this and send this to fifty thousand people," you're gonna say, "Are you out of your mind?" But we get money from all over the place. We work with the state of Tennessee. Right now, our other board members are over at the state at the governor's conference selling you today. They're over there for this weekend, over there selling you. And Harold can tell you, Pope County cannot do this on their own. There's no way you can spend the money that we're spending by yourself. I couldn't do it as Edwah Chamber. That's why we, and that's why Monroe County, they're all happy speeches just to be a part of this organization because we're taking a lot of the burden off them and for their small investment, we're bringing economic benefits to them.
Well, and, and, and it's not, I don't think my beef is, is, is with y'all, period, as far as that goes. My other question is, where does the ticket money go?
Tennessee Dollar Rail museum.
Okay.
And now, we receive, we receive, uh, and I would have to, I'm not the director, so I don't have to break down. But we receive about, it seems like it's three dollars for a ticket sale.
Yeah.
And that goes to pay the two million dollar loan that we're paying for this line. Can you imagine paying for it with three dollars ticket sales? But we also have other income because we have the art of there that we store train cars. But we're not making a killing. We're a nonprofit. We would've been better off several years ago to pull up that steel when the steel market was up, and we could've sold it. But you know why we didn't? Because we promised Glen Springs Holdings that we were gonna take care of you. Because this is a permanent economic impact that will last a hundred years, not just short sighted.
Mr. Chairman, can I help you for four, four seconds?
Yeah, and then, uh, third and second, third and second, third and second, one and a half minutes. I do wanna point out, and, uh, I do wanna point out, this is not the first time Pope County gave them the money to, uh, Tennessee Overhill. We had a similar spill at that time. This was during, uh, the time of the rail authority come up to the vote. And, uh, we had a similar spill about how much, uh, economic impact the Tennessee Overhill was providing. The next year, after we did not pay that, uh, and I think y'all had pulled back if you went forward with the rail authority, we looked at the impact and we did not see the difference in y'all talk. I just wanted to...
But that's, that's what we did.
And I just wanted to point that out. The second thing I would wanna point out, Mr. Chairman, uh, we're over halfway. That's what I'm just saying.
Let me say one thing, you're a bit short, but to answer your question...
I'm sorry, give me just a second.
Okay.
And a third of the way into the agenda. Go ahead.
Okay. The reason why you didn't see the economic change is because we didn't quit the trains coming to you.
Couldn't afford to. Y'all had too much base on...
No, we could do it tomorrow. We actually made more money on the short trips than we did the long trips. Because we do, because we do two a day.
It's like his crane that he seen on that magazine. Y'all need what we got over here. There's sales.
We can do two trips a day. We actually make more money.
I'm over here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm a native. I'm his. I'm, as Pope County did, fourth generation. When we took possession of forty-three miles of track that's in Pope County that we own, the board members, it's the only time in the thirty years that we've ever taken a roll call vote. And I'm the one that stood up and said, "Okay," they said, "CSX has abandoned the line. There's not really anything we can do." Ingrid Bueller was the person that I talked to after the meeting, and Ingrid spent days and days and nights of her time going through all this massive paperwork of what you had to do to take possession of a line that was being abandoned. So we took possession of it with the expectation that Pope County and McMinn County would form a short line rail authority, and we would hand it off to them. And you were here, you know, there were two commissioners that were arguing that once that was created and the members were appointed, they served for life. No, it was plain English. It said that they would continue to serve and the commissioners appointed their replacements. Well, if they didn't appoint their replacements, they continued to serve. That doesn't mean they served for life. So they voted down the rail authority. And we took on that liability part.
That vote was based on the fact of the number of, uh, votes that Pope County had in that rail authority compared to the number that McMinn County had and Copper Hill would have. Copper Hill doesn't have. Copper Hill would have, and Copper Hill and McMinn actually had more votes than Pope County did. But the liability issue come up. If you remember that rail authority, the rail that was, uh, discarded started, the discard line started at the Pope County line. Not one inch of that was in McMinn County. That's why that...
And the Tennessee Overhill board members took that liability on our heads, which we still have. We were expecting a few months, not many years. And so I'm not sure what the future is for that. But we were doing a lot of things before that issue came up. I mean, we had been working for years for Pope County. And I contributed my time. And it just, it frustrated me. If we don't have tourism, if the commissioner don't want to promote tourism, I don't know what we do for our taxpayers. But as a property owner that's had to carry the burden for all these years when the Copper County closed, we didn't have that income. And the industry, every industry in Pope County has left. It's gone to other counties. I employ about fifteen people every summer providing jobs. Without tourism, uh, I wouldn't have any of that, and that income wouldn't become of the Pope County.
Well, I'm gonna have to, this is, this is, we'll give it to our time length. Uh, I appreciate y'all's opinion.
And I agree with you in the discussion.
I just say, you know, we pretty much see the opinion of this board, and, uh, you know, I challenge you to come back with this budget time and, you know, tell us something you've done different after you've heard our opinions and concerns. And, uh, you know, we're more than willing to continue partnership if you make some decisions.
Well, I think, I think our increase of twenty-four percent so far this year is, is where we're gonna come back and say, "We're bringing you twenty-four percent more than we brought last year to drop off Pope County."
Well, I don't think that's gonna change nothing. I'm, you said...
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, that's fine.
We can add to partnership by owning that, if y'all want the money. But I mean, we spoke...
Well, a partnership, partnership is, is binding, is like any other county.
Moving on to the approval, trustee is boned.
I have, I have a question that, which is, it's for the bond, and it's just a formal, I'll do a present when you want to start.
Did we not already do the slide? Did we not do any slides on this one?
No, I, not at the bond.
No, no, thanks.
Do you have a question?
So you just take a motion, just like, like a motion to approve the bond request?
I say.
Motion, John, thank you for banging. Any discussion? Throw time.
Yes.
Yes.
Actually, the...
Yes.
...the board...
Yes.
...to mark it.
Yes.
...is... Is...
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, please. Uh, next is the county budget director, county executive.
So, did you take your resumes for this job?
I did not because of the timeline of which I came into office and with having a bank in office, all the way across the board.
I'm like motion approved of us, the budget director, second. Motion, my, James, second, Lamar. Any more discussion?
I mean, I kinda feel like it needs to have, she needs to have an education doing this because, I mean...
She is more than willing to go back. Just some of those commissioners have, have often heard from our executives, she's more than willing to go back. And it's also...
Well, that, that comes back to us taking resumes for it to see if there's better candidates that could be in our county that could do this job. Because that way they wouldn't have to go back to school because they've already got it. I mean, there could be kids out there that have went to college that don't have a job, that need good experience. Or someone may be sitting without a job and has college experience. And, I mean, then they wouldn't have to go and they would know how to do a budget.
Like I said, she has worked years, as you can see, within the financial institution.
But that has nothing to do with life. I mean, she's a financial sales representative. I mean...
Yes, she is.
I'm here.
Well, I had concerns about her. So I called her boss, and I said, "Would you hire her for the job?" He said, "Yeah." He said, "She's the one who fit." That's it.
So who's gonna take responsibility if our budget gets messed up?
We are. Because all of them, this budget that was just passed comes to the ones that weren't even here then. And the next budget comes to all of everybody's sale here. The whole line of even the budget goes, itself goes wrong. It's on us. If the implementation of the budget goes wrong, that's a different story. And that, that can land right on us as much as it hurts and it does.
And, uh, I guess it causes some, uh, difference of agreement, what difference of opinion with some past county executives over years. We are, I guess we take more of a part in our budget than back, I guess, any county. Y'all, you say y'all over.
We're under the Fifty Seven Act. We don't really have a choice.
We are.
Yeah.
So are we just gonna pass it without taking resumes?
We don't have the power to take resumes. I don't think. That's part of the issue. You've got a presentation that has to be done by him. We have to confront his presentation. We don't have the power to solicit for this job, but I know it. But now, that might be, if y'all wanna check on that, I have no problem. But it's always my understanding that, uh, we can't even walk the res, uh, the request. We can't come back and put another one in. We can't do it and then put it in by two-thirds to get the Senate majority like we can on some of the state, uh, things that we do. There are things that are recommended to us. We don't have to take the recommendation. So we can walk around it. We can do it by two-thirds. This is not one of those.
So we're clear as far as liability on the issue of not having resume, resumes?
Hold on, do you want me to say that?
If we're clear on the part that we didn't have to take resumes due to the situation, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, ma'am. That, and also when the, uh, employee head, the department head sets forth, here's the department.
Yeah. Well, and here...
And the department head, that's setting forth my department.
You know, I mean, the only thing that I've got to add to, you know, if it makes some, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying that as you, if I were head of an office that could put the screw to me, so to speak, I would want to handpick my personnel, whoever they are. I'm just saying, if I were in your sheets.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's, that's where I'm at.
You know, and also note, like I said, everybody left the county executive's position, the office.
Yeah. We see what Trump's helped done to him. So, you know, that's, that, and I can do.
What this boils down to, as of now, it's Robby's place to make the recommendation, and if, uh, we have two-thirds, I mean, they won't change... And if, with two-thirds, I mean, they won't change it, it will affect the current administration. If we didn't change it, it would be, I mean. She's approved, it's her job till, you know, as long as he's county executive. So if we ever change it, it just affects the next administration, when you go out of office, they have no bearing on the current situation.
But back to that, what Samantha's talking about, we may not have to do resumes or whatever or not get the correct word to use there, but ten years past we have. Uh, we've done hospital committees, we've, you know, about any old time to remember.
In order to.
We've always had resumes and commissioners pick some people. We've done it for years.
Even, even on hospital, they have to walk out. Would do.
Yeah. Oh, I, I agree. But what Samantha's saying, she would like to have people to choose from, so there's one we're gonna have to go to. And stuff will be done, and I, I don't agree with that either.
You know, I'd also, I'd also like to note as well that these ladies who come in to make payroll two weeks, back to back for four, four total weeks, that the county payroll and that the county budget has been taken care of, that also all the vendors have been paid from, from those that were not paid before my administration.
Yeah, you said everybody had done last round?
Yes, sir.
Did you ask them to stay or?
Nobody came to me and, you know, and I, I know that whenever I ran my campaign, I had phone number, email address, and nobody came.
Well, and it gets, it still gets back to the point, which, don't get me wrong, I know this has to be done this way. We gotta vote on it, that's said and done, we gotta vote on it. It just kinda stinks that everybody else hires whoever they want to and I ain't gotta ask Joe Blow.
But this job makes it better for county.
Yeah, this is a, I mean, this is an important job, I, you know, I thoroughly agree with you on that. Uh.
That's the reason why I'd like to have more people to choose from, I mean, what's saying, you know.
Well, I, I, let me throw this in and I don't, you know, and then I'm gonna end it because, you know, if Catrice finds out that this job is too much for her, she will be the first one to walk out the door. And they, nobody have to tell her to, I can promise you that. I, 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 I promise, any, whatever I need that needs to happen, because she won't do it. If she thinks she's putting the county in jeopardy in any way, her not being able to fulfill that job she's got. So, but other than that, take a vote.
Anybody?
This is your only consideration, what you think about this, as you had this planned when you were doing your campaign?
I thought long and hard, just like a lot of other decisions. And it was my honest opinion that to look to keep some of our prior administration. But when I walked in day one, nobody came to work.
Let me add this, whenever, eight years ago, when I come on the commission in on that one term, Kelly Morgan had, probably didn't have the credentials that Ms. Lowe has. But she came on and she agreed to go further her education to where she could, you know, obtain that certificate or credibility or whatever. That's the same thing that Ms. Holt does, agreed to do that as well, to further her education concerning uh, what it would pertain to in the way of budgeting. But she's not doing the budget, she's just taking care of the paperwork.
But with Kelly too, when our old account budgeter, she messed up on one, so that was allotted to somebody else and it all evened out, so it looked like the budget equal. And that's one, that's one thing that, I mean, I don't, I just think it needs to be someone who's got an education because they went through school to do that. They've had account, I mean, they've had accounting and everything in school and, I mean, even though if no one does apply for this, I mean, then we can improve it. But I, I feel like we need to give some people a chance because there may be someone out there with bachelor's in accounting that may want a job.
And that's what I'm asking you all to consider as well. We walked in day one, had to make payroll for this campaign. Day one. With nobody coming to work in the office. And we made, we had vendors to pay and we'd make. And we've done these things. You know, and as well, a little while ago, when we done the office out, so the time we were paid, probably those pretty good builders and lots of heads were doing this one. They may not have the certificate of certification that they're, the builder's note, or the builder's note to do the job. That's why I'm presenting this to you.
Throw time.
David Dunn.
Yes.
John Whitaker.
Yes.
John Switty.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Matt Allen.
Yes.
Dee Young.
Yes.
Matthew Penn. Daniel Lee.
No.
Jeremy Kim.
No.
Six, yes.
Next is hospitals.
How many of yous have been to one?
Uh, so we got hospital, airport, parking lot, traffic, public community center.
Uh, please keep it quiet, man. Yeah, just gonna give a brief update, Robbie and Doug, you know, I have with, you know, today, they expressed their you know, they did looking into hospital and maybe doing something that they're wanting to study murder. Uh, what I think would be the best course of action is to start with, we'll run, run a notice in the paper and then also notify, you know, healthcare facilities, we, you know, I did that the first time with forecourt herself. Um, you know, wanted to have a couple of months to look at it, so I figured we'll just get a November date. Um, letting them, they want us to turn in a proposal, turn it in. And then, you know, each county and city commission can go look at it and see what they like best and then we can see if we work with their line.
A deal, finalization, move it, come back to this board, and first of all, that's great. Why don't, you know, reasonable dollars work. Whatever y'all agree, just ask to come back to us for a quick call.
Well, yeah, yeah, what, it'd just be, you know, have everybody turn in, you know, what your plans are with facility, how much they want to give, you know, things like that. Um, and then we'll have still did, have it open, uh, each commission will give copy of all of them, we can look at them.
When it authorized, you can take the sale meeting.
Well.
We want to have a county district open for this.
Well.
Well, these years.
I have a copy of the deed for everybody.
Up what?
The deed that's missing, I have a copy of it. I have, I made a copy for everybody. I also have a copy of the survey part of it.
What is the?
The one that no one can find a copy of when we asked for it. This is the copy of it, and it's also got the, um, the private acts of nineteen fifty-three on it. This deed was from nineteen fifty-three.
Have you got one over there? I had one over.
Yeah, there's, there's three different deeds for the, for the, well, actually, there's another one that was a deed, correct? And there's, yeah, the property was required in three different tracks.
This was by all.
And there's the, the bank had recorded a few years ago on what the property is, I don't know. The total property tracks together.
Now, there was some additional acreage that we turned over, I think.
Well, yeah, there's, there's four, there's four different tracks there together, but the fourth track, it was in Copper Basin Medical Center's name and where the other three were in the board trustees of the Central Bay Hospital District. So they've been six chapters parcels all these years. Uh, it was part of the collateral, it made that case separate, separate thing, it's just making six acres that it had, doesn't really have anything to do with the facility. But, yeah, that's what, you know, basically, I, I think, you know, your committee wants to do bid opening, that's, that's, that's fine to do that, but we're just having some time in, in November, that way, if they want to tour it, wants to, you know, do their due diligence, they'll know upon what they're gonna be proposing or offering, and that way, pick the one you like the best and we can work out a specific agreement, uh, terms and conditions, and then, uh, each commission will approve that and then we can, you know, move forward with kind of close to it.
How many people have we got that's kinda interested?
Um, well, I, I think we should, we could probably get, you know, two or three maybe, and there may be more, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. Once it's put out, then.
Yeah, I'll just send out, just, you know, every area of hospital, I think, give them opportunity that way, everybody has a, has a shot at it. If you don't like any of them, you don't have to take any of them, that's, you know, there really will be one that you're gonna try to work on out there.
Yeah.
And so far, all that's been done is talk. Uh, I know myself, another person that's here that got it set up, we met, know the last Thursday. Uh, and the things that we're talking about, I know we're talking with Commissioner Trantum as far as trying to have some communication. I know I see a lot of people from District Three, what their intentions are for the hospital. Well, today, they were in the office, our national. So they're, and they were gonna be here tonight, but there was a conflict with the CEO having to be at another place, but their will to even come back, uh, to sit down and talk, have some of these things so they can keep people informed. But it's, uh, it's in the talks as far as getting that hospital moved on, and I, I know a lot of people have expressed that concern because six months ago, there was a bidding process, nobody signed up, and like Eric said, two, possibly three. And I dare say in the office, we get two or three phone calls a week, uh, from some as well that won't express some type of interest, so, and that's what Eric says, we're working on our part. Bring to you, you tell us, and then go further from there.
So we need to authorize Eric tonight to take bids. Please.
Anybody?
Yeah, I don't know.
How about the motion authorize Eric to take bids? Is there anything else you want to say, Mike?
Um.
Sounds right.
No, we're just, uh, I'll, I will do still bids and then I'll have it set up to where it'll, you know, Eric will do the deal and take the package for the November meeting and then you can also duck town.
They have a shoot for the second Thursday, all week around here.
That, that's right.
Second, second Thursday.
But is this deed gonna stand good? I mean, 'cause if it does, in the back clause of it, it says that we can't sell it. And that's one reason why I handed it out, because I didn't know if this deed stood good.
This was, was this not the first thing?
Yeah, this is.
So do we not get a copy of the other ones, the disposses, I mean? Cause I, I mean, this deed, I don't know which one stands good, does that make sense? Because in this clause, it looks like if we sell it, we're gonna lose everything, and I just wanna make sure.
Um.
Because there, I mean, we can, we can take rent on those side, those side office buildings that we're not collecting rent off of and pull ourselves out of debt. And, I mean, and before we lose it, we should at least.
But we're not gonna lose, we own it.
But you don't, I mean, this, this deed right here says, just because we consume the debt that we co-sign at the bank? We don't know that.
Well, the question is, I don't know if, is this deed going and it's been replaced by another deed over time?
And if it was, why don't we get a copy of it?
Well, there, there, like I said, there's three, there's three different deeds, 'cause there's three different tracks. So they're, they're all, they're not completely complacent, you know, so there's not four, but, um, I mean, as far as what you're talking about there, um, that was, you know, that, that was dealing with the, with the copper company.
Yeah, but it went to bankruptcy court, and most bankruptcy courts, when you have a piece of property and it goes back, that, I mean, I just wanna make sure that they can't take it and us lose property and money.
Was that not part of what Logan done, because he gave it to set aside? Somebody took over the interest of the copper company, but it went out business rate? Was that not part of what you've been working on all this?
Well, yeah, as far as what we're going to do, yeah, I'll, I'll do most of it.
Wasn't that, isn't that been took care of?
I'm not sure where it is now, I, I didn't talk to him lately, but, um, yeah, I mean, that, that's something that we, you know, we'll, make sure everything worked out, yeah.
I'll rescind my motion.
Just leave it, don't be sure before we do it. I would think, a lot of discussion, we had the two attorneys, Mr. Logan and Mr. Bruce. Uh, I don't think there's any doubt to give you a sellable, but, uh.
May I?
This question has been raised, it's, you know, it's gonna have, it's gonna have to sell. It's gonna have to go back on the pass road, it's gonna have to open up the jobs. So, you know, I don't care to wait up on.
Well, I mean, once they all mention, when you mention this, anybody that's approached this, nobody worried about it, that's been looking at it.
Don't matter, it's gotta be finalized.
Well, this research is, I have a building committee meeting in, uh, twenty days, Dave.
Day twenty?
And everybody's on building committee, which I will return and quit, can I meet on, uh, Tuesday, twenty-fifth? This coming Tuesday, and everybody who's on it, is anybody? And we'll look at it, and in fact, they will call a meeting five days from the twenty-fifth, authorize you to take action. It's Tuesday. Another notice?
It's gotta be ten days for our special conference.
Right, but Tuesday, I have a meeting. But what I, what we'll do, we'll go ahead now, call, the special call commission meeting, ten days from now, and let the clock start ticking on the ten days, and if we need, we'll cancel the meeting, but this way.
That's ten days from the day of paper, thanks, man.
I thought, cause we just had a weekly paper, that was moved with the bend.
No, paper of general circulation throughout the county. We'll do all that and bring.
You gonna send the Chattanooga Times Free Press, we can get it Chattanooga Times Free Press.
Yeah, we can do that.
Put it Chattanooga Times Free Press, begin Sunday, Monday, and then by then, that'd be on.
By the ten. Committee meeting has, doesn't have a meeting.
If not a committee, if.
They talk about special calls.
Special calls live, if it's meeting. So you want special calls?
A committee meeting's five days.
Committee meeting's five days.
Special calls live.
About eighteen hours, too.
I want committee meeting to be Tuesday, that's the first day possible. And I will go ahead, I'm gonna win call, commission meeting, ten days, the very first day of the game, when it, whichever day y'all figure out as far as the papers, and then we'll have that clock ticking, and then the media will cancel meetings, that'll have it placed. And, uh, building committee meeting, meeting Tuesday night, and I will call everybody tomorrow, I'm putting on building committee. Uh, is anybody here, I don't mind sticking with them, anybody particularly interested in being on the building committee? And I think, who left, just, you play match with me.
I'm the farmer.
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 Oh, I see, farmer. I'll say what country you're from, say, say, foreign.
Big, I'm known as little stuff, I forget.
And two, the committee meeting, you know, anybody on the committee, well, they come to them and anybody from Ken or whatever, it's just like a regular meeting, I guess just to form out the form of meeting. So that's based usually, sales down here.
Did you get them a phone call, I didn't hear?
No, I'm sure, yeah, I was asking who else for inter- and.
All righty.
I'll let everybody know by tomorrow.
All righty.
Uh, so next is, uh, airport, lighting, probably, county executive.
Rob?
I thought you were gonna be up until?
No, 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 lighten you up.
All right. I can tell you, Mike is snacking. We got.
I'm, I'm doing this. Uh, you guys already got the letters, uh, updates. We're actually, uh, looking at doing a light project. It's, uh, uh, needed at our airport. Bringing in businesses, uh, bringing in people, coming in. In fact, right now, it's daylight only and, uh. People with businesses, corporations, whatnot, a lot of schools that we're trying to get in. We have four, we have five instructors out there now. We're trying to, you know, just procure the money that we're getting from the federal government and the state. So we only have to put five percent down. And we're willing as white water aviation to put that money down. Uh, in the form of prepaid rent, which is really a no interest loan to the county. And it's just, uh, two months and, or two years, one month of, of, uh, payment of our rent. Uh, it's an estate for the paperwork. The, uh, the, the, the payment would take you twenty five months. I think it went up two and a half years on that, uh, piece of paperwork. So, but extend the rent, uh, actually, uh, right now, we're paying till February of twenty twenty three, or twenty twenty one. This'll take us to March of twenty twenty three, uh, which is probably out of our pockets. But, uh, we get that, uh, four hundred seventy five thousand dollars from the public governments to build up our airport access, see us win in a situation. If you guys have any questions for me.
So how much revenue is the airport out of the revenue?
Um, that's hard, that's a hard question to answer.
It's a revenue in itself.
Well, we have hanger reel. So we're ready and ready for hanger reels. We're just handing back, uh, between the five law and itself. Uh, we can put in over hundreds of thousands of dollars in this ceremony. We're still paying him back to the tree. I hope he's getting paid off by time. But anyway, uh, so we're still prepaid, are doing his pay and, uh, with hanger reels. And we're supporting tourism, which, uh, is a big thing in East Oak County. But, uh, all this money comes back to build up our infrastructure. Uh, it's a, it's a hub of transportation. Uh, people with airplanes, we have means. Uh, we have people, airline pilots, uh, looking at retired air, some of them open, uh, becoming instructors, bringing in more students. Uh, we also have people that are building businesses over there. And, uh, that in turn, uh, builds up our county and our revenue, our tax base. So.
Quick question. We not have a discussion and an agreement on airport lights several years ago?
Four years ago.
Where we opted to let y'all have some free time on the rental agreement and y'all were gonna do airports and lights and a fuel station.
Yeah, those were approach lights. You're right.
What lights?
They were approach lights coming into the plateau. They were L E D, uh, uh, they're calling path, uh, precision path, uh, in- indicator lights. And they're basically giving a pilot safe haven coming in our, our plateau, plateau. And your peripheral vision as a pilot, you look around you and you tend to drop down. And then you look up and you see a runway that's, that you gotta climb to get to. And, uh, there's been deaths in a lot of airports, one down in Pickens County, Georgia, with family of four that crashed into their airport because they fell in that trap. That was the beginning of the light project. This light project is actually just to light up the runway. Right now, the runway's not lit. Uh, we don't have rotating beacon networks. And, uh, we're looking forward to getting that done. So we get people flying in there at night. It'll be a twenty four seven operation, which increases fuel revenue and our tax base. And, uh, right now, uh, as winter comes along, we have shorter and shorter days. People aren't gonna be flying as much. And revenue will be going down for fuel, right, uh, for fuel.
Well, Mike, I had told you before, I mean, a lot of my neighbors are not okay with planes coming in at night, especially these, these students that are flying at night. Cause I mean, which they have, I mean, this is our houses. Cause if they miss, they're going in it. And another thing is when, before you did run it and it was lit up, there was a really bad drug problem. And even though you do have lights and stuff, they can still come through the woods. I mean.
Well, my question is, and this might be another stupid question. What are we getting? And have we been approached by anybody? A company that says, if you will do all this big stuff, we will come, you know? And, and, and what, a, a thousand dollars a month? I rent a junky house for five hundred a month to pay. So a thousand dollars a month for an airstrip seems awful cheap. But I don't know what you're, I don't know. This, uh, this is all new to me. So, I mean, and you might not be making money. If you're not, I'd get out of it. Because with that kind of rent, I don't know what you can rent a business for a thousand dollars a month. I just don't know what it is. Well, I, I don't understand. I farm. So I know. And, and, but, you know.